It's a big deal.
What'd you do? It's getting kind of long without hearing. Nine thirty? I heard she wants to be out here by seven.
Yeah, obviously.
What'd you put? Be sure to melt it up. Said you should get some of that.
You could have hooked the sister up.
I'll be a little walkin' guy. A little walkin' guy.
Sometimes it doesn't. Is it all because it's the holiday week or?
I don't know.
Maybe always.
All right, Tom Hunter.
Because that was what was holding us up.
I walked in, I got my papers.
Proceed.
Can I give this?
I want to officially call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We've had a couple of changes recently, but G four and five, I'm sorry, G four and five. But are we ready to approve the agenda?
We'll move with suggestions of the changing.
What's the changes, okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Move in second to approve the second version of the agenda with G four and five added. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anybody online who needs to handle this?
Nope.
Communications, as far as the open communications time of the meeting? Anybody here for the public that is here to speak?
Let's all turn our mics on.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Seen a lot of red lights, that's all I'm saying.
Now the opening day of the conference tag with the meeting. If anybody is here to step forward and anything about the agenda. I'll start with Joe Janison. Okay, Joe.
So, I just want, my name is Joe Janison.
Push your button.
I am the director.
Thank you, Joe.
My name is Joe Janison. Oh, that sounds really good. And I'm the executive director of the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. We're very closely with the city and with several volunteers throughout the community. We are a Main Street community. And this last week, we went to Des Moines and we picked up $100,000. It's a real big check. It's fake, but it's real big. And that money is going to go into the old fire station building. So we're very excited about that, that we were able to help. This is the seventh of these grants we've received through Main Street Iowa and through the Iowa Department of Economic Development. So we're very proud of that. I just wanted to come in and tell you guys about that. We've got two big events coming up. Saturday is, anyone?
Shop small.
Very good. Shop small Saturday. And what are you doing? Shop small Saturday.
Luckily and smoothly.
All right. I've been working very hard with the businesses. And we are going to have 25 bags on at 8:00 AM on Shop Small Saturday. And people can line up as early as 7:30. And the first 25 people in line will get one of these bags. 25 bags. 24 have gifts from the various businesses and gift cards. And one has $100 from Balmance. So anyway, it's going to be a big day. Lynch Ford has also given away $500 in community cash that day. And I'll be out in front of the pocket park out here with my fishbowl. And we'll give another $200 away that day. So it's all about shopping small. And we're here to help incentivize anyone who wants to come and spend their Shop Small Saturday with us here in Mount Vernon. And of course, the next Thursday, so a week from this Thursday, right? Is Magical Night. And we go five to eight. And there's a lot going on that night. And I hope you all come out and be a part of it. And that was all. Thank you.
Well done, Joe.
Joe, just real quick, I want to clarify. Is this the seventh $100,000?
No, they're not always for $100,000.
Right, I know there have been some tens.
This is the highest you can get with this grant. And I can't remember the number. I figured it out for another grant I was writing. But maybe as much as $600,000 total. Yeah, and then, you know, there's several other grants that we work with. But this is kind of a big one. And those that don't know, it's a Main Street Iowa grant. And we are Main Street affiliated, but it's only the 12-block area. That's the way they work. So it's not available to every business. It's only available to those businesses in the 12-block area. We had four businesses apply and one, one we sent to Des Moines, which won the grant. So there you go.
Thank you very much.
Also significant that it's a building that's been underutilized for 12 years, I believe now. And it's also some good use in it. And part of the receipt of the grant is that there'll be a lot of activity in the next two years. Am I correct? Isn't there a two-week period window to it?
That's right. And it's the first, this grant is for the first phase. So it's to make the building stable and do things like the plumbing and bathrooms and that sort of stuff.
Or they can do other stuff. Good evening and welcome. Introduce yourself, please.
Well, good evening, council. I'm so excited to be here, not to preempt the fun part. But I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jeremy Kamer. I'm representing J E O Consulting, Inc. It is my understanding that we have been selected for the Downtown Streetscaping Project. And I wanted to introduce myself to the remainder of council and staff, whom I haven't had a chance to meet all of you yet. I look forward to working together and getting to know each of you and your community ever better. I live very close by and I've been here many, many times. My come for Shop Small Saturday, it sounds like a good time. But I will be here to talk to you before, during, after council meeting. If you all want to chat, get to know me, let me get to know you. I'm so happy to be here about this.
I know the RFP, there was aggressive calendar for community meetings even in December. Is that something that you think you'll hit? Or is that something you need to decide? Or is December too busy?
December is probably too busy.
I'm going to go aggressive.
Probably after the first of the year.
We're looking for participation and input.
Yeah, we'll be following up, putting together a steering committee in the near future, working with Community Development Group and identifying key stakeholders to bring in for our early meetings. But before that, we had to figure out contracts. You all want to stick around after.
Thank you, Jeremy, for coming to this meeting. And introduce yourself to everybody else. And look forward to working with you on a very important project from Alberta.
All right.
But also further testimony that you heard the mayor loud and clear during your time. And that is the communication is going to be probably the most important part of this project. And thank you for continuing that communication here tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to get sent agenda. We have one item as far as minutes last meeting. Ready to move forward on that?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I'll second that.
Move in second to approve the city council amendments as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No oral hearing, no ordinance approval. Resolution for approval, starting with G1. Certifying the county auditorer tip debt occurred in 2023.
So one of the many oddities, we have to certify our tip debt in calendar years to collect in fiscal years. So we have to certify our tip debt by December 1 to the county for collection basically after July 1 of '24. Two of the tip districts are the two subdivisions from the Heights and Stone Brook. And basically those request her for any and all tip-related monies that are available by kind of a blanket statement versus a dollar amount. The other is the tip that we use to repay bonds, LBC pool, and then an interfund home for the purchase of a food station. This, I believe, is the last year or second to last year for paying that $500,000 back to the enterprise bond.
Good. Any questions to staff or Chris on this report?
I move to approve the resolution 11-20-2023A, certifying the county auditorer tip debt incurred in calendar year 2023 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you all. Second?
I'll second.
Move in second to move forward on G1. And if there are no further questions, I think we need a roll call, roll to here, Marsha?
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Sure that. Resolution passes. Moving on to G2, approving fiscal year 2024 transfers.
Pretty self-explanatory, the moving franchise fees over to our capital improvements fund for the handlestick improvements. And then the business 30 was an emergency repair of that culvert.
That's what Ellen talked about last meeting?
Correct.
And this 4312 isn't the total?
That's just the engineering.
Okay, all right.
I was.
Did you call it wrong, right? Are we sure we did it right?
That's just the engineering side of it.
I guess it says street, this means engineering.
With that clarification, I would move approval of resolution 11-2023B, approving fiscal year transfers for 2024.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steph. Move in second to move forward on approval of fiscal year 2024 transfers. That is again a roll call vote, so, yeah. Marsha?
Herman?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to set dates for consultation, public hearing, proposed amendment, and number eight to the City of Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
So this is actually an amendment to the original, to urban renewal area, the original tip district. This is for the senior-style housing cotton material. 395,000 of load modern income funds will go directly to CHI. And the remaining 750 will go towards infrastructure improvements to the lines to extension in the north south road, whatever that end will be named at a future date. But we have to go through the process of amending the plan so that we can use load of modern income funds, which are tip dollars technically that come from the two subdivisions. And once we get this done, then we can go ahead with the borrowing for repayment using those funds.
Do we have an architect's drawing or some type of plat for that property to show the public yet? Because I don't see the division that wants to be.
We have a rendering of the plat itself and what the plat and the extension will look like. I'm hesitant to send out anything as far as an architectural rendition of the building.
Just this?
Way too slow.
So started at 45 units, went down to 30. HUD changed some design guidelines. They changed their guidelines, but they don't necessarily mean our design guidelines. So there's going to be some back and forth. I just don't want to put anything out there that is going to potentially change.
Maybe it's effectively change. 750,000 for the road?
Realizing that this is just a rough guesstimate at this point. We do not have to utilize or borrow 750. But whenever you do an amendment, you always use the highest number possible because otherwise you have to go back and do it all over again.
Well, we've talked about LMI and one of the core principles of our housing moving forward. So anything we can do to support that in that vein? I would move approval of resolution 11-2023C, setting dates for consultation and public hearing on proposed amendment number eight to the City of Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Plan.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Question? What date?
Excellent question.
And I have the calendar. Basically, we'll end in December. So this will go, or end in January. This will all go through December. So the consultation has to occur. Those notices will go out on Wednesday. We have to consult with both the school district and the county because they're the two taxing affected entities. I believe that date is right before Christmas holiday. And then, public hearing wise, I believe we are January 2, hopefully, based upon tonight's meeting. But if that number change or date changes, it's no big deal. We still have time.
So can I amend the movement to the first meeting in January?
You don't have to necessarily amend it. It'll just be set for whatever is that first meeting in January.
Need for the questions about the cottonwood project? What's CHI? Is the name cottonwood?
That's the name of the development I think they gave it. Cottonwood Trail.
Cottonwood Trail. Any other questions? I think we're ready to vote.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next one is additional item 11-20-2023D, approving pre-annexation agreement between the Lojges and the City of Mount Vernon.
So the next two resolutions you've actually adopted once before. However, Troy and Tracy had not signed their pre-development agreement at the time that you took action.
No reason for that?
Not specifically. There's been some minor changes on the amount of ground that they are proposing. The Lojges are proposing to annex in order to get to the 120-plus acres to the north. The county had thrown out an idea to Troy that wasn't legal. But we had to go through the process of getting word from the state to tell them that what would be proposed couldn't happen. They essentially wanted us to annex down the roadway, which the state put a kerbosh to years back because all the metro communities were just annexing down highways to get lucrative ground. So that was a suggestion that was made to them. So then we had to kind of go through that process.
And these two resolutions are for two different annexations?
So it will be the same annexation and it'll be two different parcels. Two different owners, two different parcels. So the resolution for CCM Holdings, that was signed and you've already adopted that one. So you didn't have to reapprove that resolution. The second resolution is basically stating that they're both voluntarily annexing in to start the petition process.
Long process, but we're getting close. Any other questions, staff? Any else to add? Motion to move forward? Do we have to move on both of these then?
Correct.
Separately.
Yes.
I would move to approve resolution 11-20-2023D, approving pre-annexation agreement between the Lojges and the City of Mount Vernon. Is there a second?
Second.
Steph. Move in second to move forward with this resolution. Any other questions, staff? I'll take a roll call vote.
Rose?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Now 11-20-2023.
I would move approval of 11-20-2023B, preliminarily approving application for annexation and scheduling for a hearing on proposed annexation of property except for within the voluntary application for annexation.
Thank you, Scott.
In question?
Is that a second poll?
Yes.
Okay. Second to move forward with the next resolution. And if there are no other questions, roll.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Hinkle?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution two passes. No more proclamations for old business. Moving to move motions for approval. Claims list that was sent out earlier today by Marsha. Any questions to staff about that?
And we'll make a motion to approve claims list.
Okay. Second? Paul? Move in second to move forward with the claims list. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of bunker gear and other personal protective equipment for the fire department. Council action as needed.
This will be a number of items that get purchased up to a dollar amount of $12,000. Each individual purchases well under the cap of 7,500 that I can approve. Whenever we're spending collectively this kind of money, I just wanted to let you know. But each bunker gear set, for instance, that they order is about $3,000 fully outfitted. So.
That's for one firefighter?
Correct. Yeah, they're all specifically sized and measured for each individual firefighter. So there's, sometimes they can use cross-use uniforms when somebody steps off. But it's not often.
I would move to approve the purchase of the bunker gear PPE for the fire department. Thank you, Craig. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion to approve the consideration of bunker gear and other PPE for the fire departments? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good in Public Works, discussion consideration of grain and haul services.
So there's two projects here. If you split them in half again, they kind of fall under that threshold as well. But given together, it's the same contractor doing the compost sifting and then the grinding. So all total, we'll spend about $8,000 to $10,000, something that we do annually. It wouldn't make any sense for us to purchase the trommel by ourselves. We'd only use it maybe once a year. So they come in, run through the trommel, load it right into the dump truck, and then we produce the compost. I will say that we're doing a very good job at composting. So we may be offloading some of that to M&amp;K just because we have an abundance now. We have to continue to make. Plus, we're losing our chip pile composting as well. So we sifted some of that.
Is this trommel, is that the yellow piece of equipment that was in the photos? Looks like it's got a drum on top of it.
Should be. Yes, yes, if that's what's in the picture.
Okay.
I wanted to just add a few things. Normally, we do rent a trommel machine. And the place we rent that from is up by Waterloo. We had that scheduled and it's typically $2,500 a week-ish. When it came time for that to come, the guy that was renting it decided to buy it. And they didn't have a backup and couldn't find one anywhere to do that ourselves. The closest thing we could find was $16,000 a month, which is almost double what we were using. And it was up north in Minnesota, that area. So we were looking at grinding this material. That guy had a trommel and was cheaper, I mean, dollars to dollars about what we were going to rent it for anyway. So we're in the process of organizing an entire lot out there and making piles that are useful. And yeah, it's, yeah. I don't know if anybody stopped out there, but it's starting to look really nice.
Yeah, it looks pretty organized.
The biggest thing that I'm excited about is that entire Grinch Hill pile that's been sitting there for several years has mostly went to compost. So we're going to get a few wood chips out of that, but a lot of compost in that entire pile is going to be moved and organized and it'll be a good thing. So.
Good deal.
Well, with that, I would move approval of the cost for the grinding and trommel services not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move in second to move forward with the public to work with questions on the grinding and trommel services. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of downtown streetscape design. Council action is taken as needed with J E O.
The group went through the interview process. That was Craig, myself, Lori, the mayor, and a newly elected councilperson. We interviewed six firms. I think, as we put in our report, I think the tipping point was a couple of things. Number one, J E O has everything in-house, so the entire team, our J E O employees, there's no subcontracting of any of the parts of this project, which is important to us just from a continuity standpoint. The second was, and probably the biggest aspect of this, going back to public outreach, is they have an entire wing in their firm for basically strategic outreach. So public engagement, all in-house. They have a pretty interesting system as far as engaging people digitally, in person, and have had a pretty regimented recommendation already kind of set in place, which was nice. All six firms actually did quite well. There were three that kind of separated themselves from the rest of their group. But I think the difference between one and two have to be in-house versus a conglomeration of a couple of different firms. So.
Could we do anything to add to that interview process at all? No, Lori did a great job. I thought the RFP was well-written. I thought that the six firms did a really good job responding to them. And Jeremy and his team did a really nice job, along with some others. But Jeremy, obviously, and his team did a really nice job presenting those responses. Lori, good job there.
She had the fun job of also calling the divisions that we didn't recommend and providing feedback. So that took the lion's share of an entire day.
Top it up. We need a motion and a second. Move forward with J E O.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with J E O as the, for the Downtown Streetscape Improvement Project.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Before you vote too, I just want to point out that this basically chooses JEO and then we will go into the process of contract negotiations and you will vote on a contract with the board.
And there's quite a timeline. I mean, the entire first year is going to be communication and staging and setup and so on, and this could take several years.
We're not digging up Main Street next summer, that's for sure.
No problem.
Second to move forward with JEO. Ready to vote on that motion? All the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Next item, discussion of consideration of pollinator plantings on city property. Thanks to councilman Rose for bringing that back up. It originally came up in sustainability and I didn't do anything with it until it came up with Parks and Rec last meet, last meeting. And first, some information shared back and forth with Graham Carl from Parks and Rec and some other representatives from this firm, Charles Ingersoll, James Hoffman, I think, and some other people there. About some things to do, capability of setting aside some land for pollinator plantings on city property. So do you want to talk about that, more about the different methods or what do you follow up on it or?
I, I think really my reasoning behind placing it under motions for approval is getting a rough idea from a staff perspective on how quickly you would like us to pursue pollinator planting. So we have a lot of different possibilities moving forward. We are bringing in close to five or six, eight acres of new ground between the two subdivisions that will be under our care. And, and for that very reason alone, Stone Brook, for instance, has a creek runs up the center of that subdivision. Selfishly, staff would prefer to plan as much prairie or pollinator type mix along that corridor so that we don't have to mow a significant portion of that. That process, however, is going to take at least three to four years. So if you're asking staff to identify areas immediately so that we can start making headway on this, then I would probably turn this back to Parks and Rec Board just so that we can look at the existing sites that we already have under our ownership with the thought of then incorporating some of these ideas into the new areas that we will be getting. But that's kind of the question that I have for the council. It doesn't necessarily have to be tonight as far as making that kind of decision, but Memorial Park, for instance, is fairly tight. We have everything in the kitchen sink. So we'd be looking at maybe nature. Davis Park, I would be a little hesitant on just because of the pool project and the fact that whatever we put in or get established can end up coming back out. And then there are segments around, especially the new areas that we purchased at Elliott. The only issue that I have with Elliott is the one area we tend to spray so that we keep thistles and things like that out of the planning surface. So, so really, like I said, just wanting some kind of direction from the council as far as how aggressive you want staff to be looking.
Can we, can we look at going down both channels? You know, the long-term one, but also Parks and Rec. And obviously, they would consider your comment that you made about Elliott because obviously we need to have the kids playing in a certain area that's safe too. So I think that makes sense. Go to what, what can you do longer term versus what can we do shorter term? Try and approach it both ways.
And I think not just the, the, when we think of parks, the things that we think of Davis, Memorial, Elliott, you know, the ones that are a park, but stuff like the pump house facility on, in between the Riverwood Bridge and the Riverwood Bridge, right? Like, you know, just stuff where we have grass and that's great, but we don't, it doesn't necessarily need to be grass.
Or a cool storage.
Or, right, exactly. You know, and before Jane did her magic with the limestone, the triangle in a lot at Fifth and Sixth, you know, just those little chunks, I think would be, would, would add character to it, it's less that we have to mow. And once we hit, once we put the process in place, then, and, and it becomes what we do with these sorts of lands, then it, it, it just is the thing that, that happens, right? So.
Well, when pollinators done right, should help with that invasive species.
Yes, I think, I mean, that's the key. So part of, the nice part about the Monarch, Monarch Research Project is it started to take into account some of the concerns that we've had in the past. You know, prairie, for instance, tree prairie is supposed to burn. We have a no-burn ordinance. And then typically, when you're putting pollinator or prairie in the middle of a subdivision, now you're actively lighting a fire in between people's homes. So I do believe that groups like the Monarch, Monarch Research Project have come a long way from the time that I started dealing with these originally. Case in point would be our Dogburn, for instance. It's a nice little area and we're able to mow it down. There's invasive species that have crept into that, but I think that, again, that goes back to the establishment versus where we're at with it, so.
Well, in a previous iteration of Time Line Council, one of the efforts we, we looked at was areas of, of certain parks that were reduced in the bottom. I remember, for example, the eastern side of Bryant Park, it's, you know, would, you don't need playing field cut every week. Nature Park, obviously, there's areas there. I think this falls in well with that consideration. Anything we can do to cut costs from a maintenance perspective, help the environment. We are a B-city, happen to be pollinators, no pun intended. So I, I think putting this in place now sets the stage for those opportunities as they come up. And I think the, the idea of doing that with these streams on Stone Brook is, it's sort of like the, you know, golden standard in doing things right. Fully support this. And with that, I would move approval of the consideration of pollinator planting on city property as the opportunities are at.
Start a second.
I'll second.
I think if I could just add the caveat to that motion to say, to certainly counsel directing Park and Rec for the, the start to study location.
Begin the process.
Just so that they're aware that this is being pushed to them.
So amended.
Before we vote on it, recognize that there will be some pain in the first, whether it's a big strip or a large or a small strip, new or current, there'll be a painful year or two of, sorry to look at, obviously, and people will question, why didn't you do that? Like this model or whatever. So there will be some pushback on that if that happens. With the contact that Greg Carl has, it's also, it sounds like there's some financial assistance that we can have with the seed mix when that time comes. So whether it's on a small scale or a larger scale, we.
I will take this mix over standing water.
A lot of the mix.
I have far more phone calls about mosquito haven than I will pollinator plants.
I think we've got a motion on the floor with a couple of suggestions added to it. Ready to move forward on the pollinator planting project? All the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. And J six, alternate meeting date for January one, which is on Monday. First, I've had to come up with the date of January second. Is that reasonable for people or what do we want to do on that? That doesn't get a vote on that, so.
Mark, are you back from New York? Mark, are you back from New York?
I will be back, or I get, I go from the 19th to the 26th.
Got it.
Uh, December?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
We don't try to pick Tuesday, but I don't know if anybody has.
It just happens.
There will be a bowl game that night, but there's a bowl game every night for the next month, so.
I think that the, the goal is we have the swearing in of the new council members to keep that as close to me anywhere you want as possible.
I'm sure that you and Lori are going to pack that agenda.
Nope. Yes, thank you.
Very commercial.
I would like to make a motion that we move the January first meeting to Tuesday, January second for the, due to the New Year holiday.
I would second that. Second to move the first meeting in January to January second. Ready to vote on that? All the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Kind of all in the same vein, councilman Herman would like to at some point before that meeting to make a few comments about, like, put that on the agenda or we can do a, a comment or whatever, very December meeting. Street closure for Magical Night.
I think we probably should.
Yeah. I would approve the street closure for Magical Night. Okay. It seems like a second.
Not a very safety issue.
Do we need to clarify? I mean, we know the time for Magical Night is five to eight, that's the time, but closing of streets.
We typically, you do not have to clarify, you just have to approve the, the street closure, but typically we work with the business owners, it starts around two, and then we try to cheap bank some things open, you know, until four.
Can you level two then?
And we do have the modified gate situation for the trolley and whatnot. Is that a?
Okay.
Excellent. I assume that will also facilitate parking, like, down at Cornell and that sort of thing? Is that sort of the idea?
No, they had once before. The entire back parking lot of City Hall becomes handicap parking because they can come in here, get to the elevator, and then get up to the street. They have Cornell and other areas that they, they utilize before, but I don't think they're running a shuttle this year.
They're running a, they're going to use the Catholic Church parking lot and they'll shuttle up to the First Street building.
Okay.
So while we're talking about this in line with safety, I know that we're not going to do anything with the surface of sidewalks until spring, but having been there, chili cooked off when someone fell, can we do something temporarily to make sure that that area, that sidewalk, dry in front of?
So the thought that I come up with is we have kind of those wooden barricades. We can make a triangle around there just so that everybody knows.
Yeah, especially because it's darker, you know, on Magical Night, I'm just really concerned about that.
Unless it snows and then we're just going to pack snow in there so nobody can walk. I don't know what's better.
Yeah.
But yeah, at a minimum, I think we've, we've looked at that area and the best we could probably do at this point is try to use those wooden barricades just to more or less stay out.
Yeah.
Do you have ready, ready green barricades?
No, but Jane can probably paint them in the time that we have.
An inflatable Santa.
Speaking of which, not to get off subject, but if you have time to go up into our conference room and see what Jane did in the lower room, you should stop outside.
For the windows on?
She's a very talented.
I feel, feel somewhat ashamed of my ability.
She really has.
Chris, that's what leaders do, they surround themselves with their own gifts.
I do the same, I do the same with Jane that I do at home with my wife. I carry wherever I need to and I stay out of the way. And it looks great when it's all the gray.
Getting back to J seven there.
Closure request for Magical Night?
All. And there. Who the second at, agree times for our closing streets for Magical Night? All the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries and in touch with business orders. Reports, be it a police report.
Chief Shannon? Thank you. In addition to whatever's in the, in the police report that you have, I'll take questions on that, but I wanted to make council aware of a few things going on. You've probably, if you were watching the Channel Nine News tonight, Marion-based company Honor and Respect put an article out, or they did a story on a fundraiser they're doing on first responder calendar that's coming out and, and it's on order right now. You can order for fundraising campaign for Cedar Rapids Critic Crusaders and Cedar Rapids Animal Control and part of that. And so we were invited to be part of that and Esteban drew the short straw, so he got to go down and get his picture taken to be in the calendar from that. So it's a, they do a lot of fun twists on, on things from there. So those are on order. I believe you can order the calendar until December 10th from that. So fun little project that we got to participate in this year. It's Lynn County first responders, so fire, ambulance, and police in that. I sent you a few emails today. You know, I was thinking we would have a squad car long before now that I ordered in August of '22 and still do not have a squad car. It was set, had a VIN number pulled last September. They advised that the VIN number is there and I was supposed to get it set for build and then found out, they set for build the 21st of November, checked back in and found out it got punted till February and we'd have to reorder to go through. So Ford supply chains are still continuing on. It's quite a, quite a situation for law enforcement all around. Everybody is trying to grab whatever they can grab from that perspective and so are we. Closest vehicles I found originally with regional search was Indianapolis, Indiana. I found some in a fleet down there. And then luckily this week, I seen some correspondents going around that Galena has some Dodge Durangos that are available for police SUVs. So I'll talk to Chris quickly and understanding that, you know, we've been a year without a short one vehicle, we have another vehicle that's set to get replaced after July from that perspective. If we stayed with Ford, stayed with our current bid process, which we still can do, we probably wouldn't see that vehicle until after July anyway. And so my proposal to Chris was, let's grab a Durango so I can get a police vehicle back in service, get that one in place, and this will hopefully put us back on track if we continue with the purchase. We'll discuss that at the next meeting to continue with that. If we stay with the continued Ford process, we can stay at the same price point we are currently locked in at, so that maybe have some benefit as well to continue from there. I would probably move away from the hybrid at this point. That's the huge issue right now, unfortunately. I like the hybrid we have, we have had zero issues with it and it's getting better gas mileage, so I really, you know, wish it would go better, but we just can't get the parts for that. So that's my proposal and kind of my update on that. We're going to move forward with that Durango and then try to get that in front of council here in the next, probably the next meeting for that next purchase from there.
So do the Durango now and then move forward with the purchase from '22 by now?
Yep, we'll have to update that, so it'll end up being a '24 vehicle that we would probably get. We're supposedly on the priority list, but I'm sure there's a lot of other departments like New York, Chicago, and LA who are on the priority list too for some of those, so I don't know how far down the priority list I am.
And we're like, it's like a five-year rotation on the car.
Correct. Yep, generally.
Yeah, so the purchase of the Durango is kind of truthful. One, we had a, a creeper deer accident, which is prompted in the, obviously faster than normal. But we are on a cycle. We, we essentially purchase a squad just about every year and each of them goes out every, about every five.
We said last January when the deer got, when the deer hit was like, well, okay, at least that's a vehicle, it's getting replaced anyway. And here we are, still waiting for that vehicle to get replaced. Also, you know, as a caveat of that deer hit, a portion of... Also, you know, as a caveat of that deer hit, a portion of the tear out of that vehicle and the install of this upcoming vehicle was covered by insurance as well, so there's some savings for the city there that was part of that claim process from there, but I just can't, I just need to get a squad car.
I know a lot of sustainability for a beauty at the hybrid, but at this point, I think we just need a vehicle, so I'll take a pass and do what you recommend here. Any questions? Monster's back at work, right?
Monster is back to work, he was off for a few weeks with an ankle injury and just swollen up for really an unknown reason, whether he's, you know, he is getting a little bit older than he was, he's coming up, he's seven years old now, so just getting, I don't know if that was part of it or what it was, or if he got something in there, but it took him a couple of weeks off. Steve was off for a week of that anyway, so it worked out good that way, and both of them are back and doing good. Also, same token, we are hopeful that Officer Frankfurt will be returning from his medical procedure, and we'll find that out Wednesday, so. And one last thing, we're gonna do a walkthrough again tomorrow at the police department, and then tomorrow night, we're having a moving party hopefully, so everything that we're gonna move, everything out of storage containers that we have into the phase one portion, hopefully begin using that as soon as tomorrow. Maybe some furniture coming tomorrow in here, possibly, if not, it's gonna be next week, but we're, we're definitely transitioning from phase one into phase two. We've got to do our part now and move, move things over, so.
Do you have anything in this building anymore, do you?
Right now, I've got everything on one site.
It's great.
For the first time in your entire career.
Eldon has been, Eldon has been moving stuff for me, and it's all there, but it's all, it's in little storage containers, hidden in various places, but it's all on my lot, on our lot we have out there.
Progress.
Yeah.
Eldon, how about public works report?
I wanted to add, I think I may have put some pictures in of the gates that we are using, and I did not mention it in my report.
Okay, I figured, I figured that's what it was.
I didn't, yeah. So yes, we spent some time with, with some of the, with Jean, Jean, and I forgot that or.
Tim Kelly.
Tim, yes. We spent some time with them, trying, not trying, fabricating things and putting things together, and then setting that up for them to be able to actually kind of showcase, and it went really well. I think it's gonna go, it's gonna go good as far as that goes, but.
In order to.
Yes, I just realized I forgot to mention that in my report, and I've taken the pictures, but nothing else other than.
At least we're still doing leaf pickup.
Yeah. I was shocked at how many calls I got today.
My neighbors are.
I had a few last week, but, so yeah, technically, last week was our last of the seven week period, the last week, but everybody I called and everybody I said, oh, I said, typically, we usually owe things here anyway, so it's nice out, people are, they can, leaves don't fall.
I'm glad you're doing that, and I know that in the past, when you were renting a vehicle to do that, to pick up, you know, you had to have a cart and fast, and now that we own it, I mean, our leaves don't fall until now, so.
Yep.
Any further questions, Eldon?
Thanks, Eldon.
Otherwise, Parks and Rec report.
Math didn't happen, did it?
Yeah, okay. Questions that the rest of staff can answer? Parks and Rec. Did follow with interest the last election where Ely did not pass their bond issue for a recreation center, but the College Community School District did pass yet a resolution for working with the YMCA. See a lot of orange search at the LBC from Prairie, from the Prairie School District, and there's a lot of people from Ely that hopefully continue to come to LBC. Nothing else from Parks and Rec? Inlet Service Jake, morning.
We'll see if this is on, is it?
Yep.
Sounds like it. All right, so you have the report in front of you, you can see it was a busy summer for us, and that's carried right into fall. We were fortunate to have about a three-week lull, we're sort of doing three to four calls a day, we were down to like one maybe every day, every other day, which helped us get caught up on some projects and started on some, some new things. So we did finish our strategic plan, so that'll go to board approval here in two weeks, and then bigger first quarter of twenty twenty-four, you'll see me again for a little bit more of a formal presentation on that and what our next five years is gonna look like. In the report, we do talk about two big projects that we were able to get done, so we do have a new ambulance on board that we'll hopefully see by twenty twenty-five, fingers crossed as our current backup unit or second out unit is definitely giving us some fits. So we're working through that and keeping it going for as long as we can. And then we're also have received, or at least it's sitting on the lot at the Upfitters, a new SUV to replace our two thousand fourteen interceptor that was donated by the city of Mount Vernon as kind of a proof of concept for our paramedic on-call and ALS interceptor vehicle. So we're excited to get something that, that doesn't shake and rattle as we do in prosperity or, or even out in the county. So again, that's at least on the lot, waiting to get the, the outfit and some of the equipment in it, and we're hoping to receive that yet before the first of the year, so. Any questions on anything in the report or otherwise?
Jake, I'm just curious to know if you have any insight you can help provide on the, on the increase in calls and what's causing that?
So it's.
Because it's so consistent.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little multi, there's a lot of avenues. One is we're just more consistently staffed, so we're, we're not only making our first out unit calls, we're consistently making second unit calls. We haven't missed or dropped a, a nine-one-one call since April first of two thousand nineteen.
So you're saying it's a bit of a function of just being able to accept more calls?
Yeah.
It's not like other, like, like there were fewer, necessarily fewer nine-one-one calls being made, we just had fewer resources to respond.
So, so there were, so we've definitely seen an uptick in our requests as well, but, you know, we had kind of a period where even our responses were a little limited in second unit responses, so that's got consistently better. We have a roster of thirty-four volunteers right now, which is amazing considering the current trend in the state and in the region. But along with that, we're starting to see a lot more requests coming in for things that maybe aren't necessarily emergency to you and I, but maybe there's mobility issues, issues in actually getting to care, or they've just prolonged the time to go to preventative care, their primary care physician, anything like that, so that we're getting pulled into that, as well as kind of within the region, there's a shortage of paramedics, a huge shortage of paramedics. So we've entered into some different service lines, primarily interfacility transfers. So when Anamosa doesn't have a paramedic available, we'll go up and provide a, a paramedic transfer from Jones Regional to Cedar Rapids, Iowa City. We've done it for Mercy Iowa City as well, because the Iowa City region is also pretty devoid of paramedics right now, or at least interfacility paramedics. So that's been beneficial for us as the, the interfacilities are definitely a good source of revenue to kind of help offset our costs and allow us to increase our staffing without necessarily coming to the city for a big ask. So obviously, there's a lot of pieces that we have to weigh with that as far as our own ability to respond. We won't accept a transfer if it's gonna leave our community without an ambulance or without a crew, so that's always first and foremost. We do have transfers that are turned down because we don't, you know, it's in the middle of the night, we can't get a backup crew put together or a transfer crew put together because people have to go work the next day, and we're gonna prioritize our own community versus that transfer when they're already at hospitals, so.
Thank you.
I would just say, Jake, the, you commented about the staffing levels being quite different than most other EMT in the communities, and it's an credit to you and your leadership certainly that you have strong staffing, that we have strong staffing here in.
And consistent with you.
So well done.
Thank you.
All the same line, of those thirty-four, how many of them are Cornell students right now? Do we have a guess?
I, I think we're probably at like four, or five.
September's ahead.
Yeah, yeah, we have a, you know, we're split. Oh, I have to make up on our roster, but, you know, we're very happy Mount Vernon and Lisbon residents, and then we have about twenty-five percent that actually come from like Cedar Rapids, Ely, well, one actually moved here from Springville, so he's living in town now, that come and stay at our station and provide coverage. We've started doing, we've set up basically a home office in our station, so people that work remote are able to come work remote from our station and then respond to calls, they've cleared it through their employers and things like that, so that's been huge for us.
Yeah.
It's kind of a good way to, to recruit volunteers.
Sure.
Or people who, you know, maybe have this as a passion or something they want to explore, but have a EMS isn't necessarily known for high-paying careers, so they maybe have a good career and then come here and are able to provide a service to our community, so.
Great.
Just did you plan that you're turning over, bringing up your next independent board meeting? Does that have the suggestions from the interviews and the public gentleman from Miami for consultant?
So it, it plays into that, so they're, they're two separate projects, they're two separate plans, but they definitely correspond. The biggest thing in our, our strategic plan is we're moving from survival, which was a lot of our, our previous strategic plan, and we're really looking forward to our future, which is a great place to be. You know, we're looking at what potential growth are we gonna see as we see new development, such as the CHI project and additional projects that are, I'm sure, not far behind, you know, as we explore those avenues, and looking at the trend in the region as far as is there gonna be an opportunity for us to capitalize on some of the, the education opportunities and things that happen in our community, providing good community education, building a resilient community with CPR, first aid, stop the lead courses, things along those lines, and what, you know, ultimately, the big ask is what kind of space do we need for that, which is something that the, the space needs analysis is gonna help with as well as our, our look to the future, so. Does that help answer, kind of answer that question?
No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake.
Whole library report, copy of that, that's. I went to the last meeting just to thank the, the board, if you need more under board members, and if they have any questions to see the business, tell them we're still working on that archive project, waiting for a price from Grace, what that'll take to finish that archiving project, so. Library, in discussion items, reports, the air council administrator, I guess I would mention one thing, this is the time of the year when I ask chairs of different commissions about what their membership fees are, and Parks and Rec has an opening, I've got an application that could fill that, but the tough one is historic preservation. Ideally, this is from Sunasley, ideally someone that lives or knows about the Cornell College Historic District, or lives in it or whatever, somebody who has some writing skills, public relations skills, website experience would be ideal, and helping out with archives, so just sort of ask in that area, and that's why these two ads have son of reaped zero applicants for that. So I, if you don't have anybody that has an interest in that, that would be helpful. That's the one that's gonna be tough to fill. I did have a question about if someone could be on two boards, I said, it's not a preference to be on Parks and Rec and Historic Preservation to Bob Campana, but maybe someone ideally that has those qualifications, because it helps with that specialized board. Fast on any names if you don't have anybody.
Board of adjustment as well, because Mark will have to go off, so there will be down to three numbers.
I did not have that.
Unfortunately, so we need to really be pushing.
Board of adjustments.
Trudy Elliott just resigned from P and Z.
I did not know that one.
And you really need to think about re-energizing the housing commission and making sure that that doesn't just lay there for too long. It's been almost a year now.
Chris Carlson does not need that other board?
Nope.
Get up, I'm sure is there, he, he's leading up.
There, there, it hasn't met for a year. It is inactive.
That conversation probably needs to be had, so the CHI housing project will actually take almost a hundred percent of our elements, so that, that portion of what they're working on is kind of dumb, now they have to kind of change direction.
Right. So it's, it's not losing the energy of all the things that they put forward in their report when Chris stepped away, okay, and making sure that we're keeping the energy going, even though the TIF funding for some of those things will not be there, there are other things.
Yeah, in some ways it's good because it kind of takes that off the table and then it goes.
We'll have something to show for here pretty soon, some construction beginning. I've had a couple of people ask me about that facility already, I think there's interest already, whether as little as it's been out there for people that reside in that facility, so. So, and housing, one spot at P and Z, and other board of adjustments. Four openings that I thought I had.
More ads in the song.
Yeah. Council reports, committee reports, the administrative reports, so Chris's comments. Any else? Any other comments? Otherwise, here you go on the business, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
Hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.